That's gonna be, that's gonna be an item.
H I J.
Yeah, I J and K.
H I J.
H I J.
I have a map of it right here too. Kind of see what we're talking about. We can hash around.
Yeah, when we get to H.
And we talked about that and also declaring the surplus buses and a truck.
With the meat house.
In the meat house, things in the meat house. As far as declaring them surplus.
I, Nick motion?
All favor.
All right, now recognizing George Duncan as an employee of the month.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is definitely a privilege and a pleasure to present George with this award from Pelican Benefits. George is a twenty year employee of Caldwell Parish. Twenty year employee of Caldwell Parish School District. He's worked in our transportation department. I have a right hand and a left hand guy and sometimes he's both of those guys right there. He keeps our transportation department going. Any needs that the buses have, he attends to those on a daily basis. He helps sometimes, even gets behind the wheel when we're shorthanded to sure transportation for students to and from school. So George, for all your years of dedication and you have been awarded the August Employee of the Month, sir. Thank you very much.
I've got more, I got two more of these already sitting at the house.
Three and twenty years I've already had. Hey George, just a quick question out of curiosity.
Sure.
What's the difference between when you started and now?
About five hundred fifty dollars in twenty years? About a fifty dollars total.
So we should be thankful that you've stayed. Man, I love the job.
You love the people you're working with.
I do. Well, you can, I mean. Well, I ask that because I don't think we can stay comfortable because at some point you're gonna leave. Okay, when you leave, we're not gonna be, well, I won't be nowhere. But they're not gonna be able to replace you with somebody that they're paying out. So I think it's time probably for people to start looking forward to what you used to get, you can no longer get. So I would like to applaud for five hundred fifty dollars over twenty years. That's an insult. But you've been loyal, you've been dedicated and I think the board should commend you. So I would offer a unanimous resolution commending you for the compassion and the service that you have rendered to Caldwell Parish School System.
All right, y'all have fun.
All right, we move on to D.
Forty dollars.
And D. Well, that's what we've been discussing for the past year or so trying to get this up. Anyway, moving on to D, the deal of voting resolution to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Caldwell Parish Schools and the Educational Facility Improvement District. This, Mr. Andrew, you have something you want to?
Yeah, just a brief overview, so this was passed by the EFID Board at their meeting at five o'clock. This just kind of puts in a resolution form that we're entering into this agreement with EFID Board and the intergovernmental agreement is attached there as well. I think the biggest things to look at would be section two. Section two as well in this one because you're also approving the holding election by the EFID Board. If you flip over to the intergovernmental agreement, I think section two and three are the most important parts because they're really defining what it is that both the district put their obligation, what they're agreeing to in this, as well as you as the school board are agreeing to. The district is gonna proceed with the election. If it's approved, they're gonna authorize the levy of the tax and then meet at least annually to make sure that those funds are transferred over to you all properly. Or have been, as well as work with you guys so that you can file your audit timing because they will fall underneath the school board for the audit. And then the school board is just to provide any kind of support needed from time to time, which is just an annual meeting after this initial year of the elections. There's not a whole lot there and then just making sure that you all receive the proceeds and spend in accordance with the proposition that was passed.
So again, on my initial course in last month, the board still has the power to get rid of, I'm assuming, the appointees.
Yes.
And they have the final say so to modify, reject, or amend whatever they recommend. Because I don't want to be like Folks' Year where there's an appointed body that has more power than the elected.
Yes, with regard to the district, the school board, the EFID Board, the school board has ultimate say, yes.
And Nick, these are the ones that we chose, right?
Yeah, the resolution, sorry, it just authorizes that in a government agreement and approves the election. Approved by EFID, so it's kind of the resolution in that's fine, sorry.
Anything else, anybody? All right, let's move on to the.
I'm a promotion reporter.
Hey, Katie, roll call. All in favor? Um, welcome.
Seconded, I'm sorry. All right, motion by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnny. Roll call, Mr. Rents.
Yes.
Mr. Varden.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Glass.
Yes.
Ms. Bass.
Yes.
Mr. Castles.
Yes.
Ms. Fallon.
Yes.
Bring this in. Moving on to the attendance update, this, give it.
All right, I'm gonna give a synopsis. What do you, I think I went everywhere. No, that's fine. I'm gonna just give a breakdown of everything that's going on with attendance. At Teacher Leader this year, for the first time, the last day, the state provided attendance meetings, which means we actually had a whole day, half a day, where we went in, they told us how to combat truancy and help us. We actually had a chief justice, we were coming to speak, we had besting board members, state superintendent, a bunch of district attorneys, judges, we had, you name it, we had everybody there to talk about this. So the state's big push this year is a power of presence, which means getting to school. It is a state problem. We're lucky here that we wanted to be ninety-four, ninety-five, and we're around ninety-two, like, we wanted before COVID like it used to be. But we don't have some of those issues, some of those issues, some districts are running fifty-five, sixty percent, which they're never there, some of those big school districts. So they gave us, the state is, we're having regional meetings, they're giving us all, I mean, lots of good information, it really is a lot of good information. And here in our district, we have a district leadership team for some setting goals, and we've also met with principals, they got their school level district teams and their setting goals, offering incentives for kids to come, even teachers, to try to make sure we don't have to get the teachers to school. So we're really excited about it, I mean, I think it's really gonna help us. Barrett and I have met with, in this meeting, we have met with the judge, we have met with the assistant DA, to try to make sure they're on board with everything we are doing. And if it gets to them at that level, that means we have documented, we have crossed every T and dotted every I before we get there. They gave us different tiers as far as one, two, and three, and all the support we can give families. So we're not just hitting the families with like, why don't you come to school, you should be here, you're gonna go to court. No, we're trying to see what you need, how can we get you to school, is it uniforms, is it transportation, is it unit help, whatever you need, we're trying to give them the support first. We don't want to get to the level where we're going to court, we want to help them with whatever they have to get to there. We're also trying to combat what's called chronic absenteeism, and that's excused or unexcused suspensions, in-school suspensions. We have a lot of parents that are just running to get doctor's excuses for everything under the sun. So we're hoping they have, they have a lot of guidance with that, so we're hoping that they're gonna be able to run it's house. We have a lot of issues with that, that running to get doctor's excuses here and there, so we're hoping we can do that. We're really excited about it. I put attendance in there just so everybody could see, if you pull it out. Yeah, I broke it down, as you can see, COVID was, what, twenty twenty-one, you can see where we were before that, we were ninety-four, ninety-five as a district, and then COVID hit and it went down. And it's kind of weird because you're gonna look, you're like, after COVID, it went up, but it went up because we were taking every excuse, and they called and said they had a fever or a cough, don't come to school. So see, I broke it down so you can gradually see how we're kind of going up this last year, we were right at about ninety-two, ninety-two degree, really. As we know, Head Start and Pre-K are not mandatory, so in the big scheme of things with attendance, it doesn't count in our attendance when we're looking at things. That doesn't mean they don't need to be in school, because we want them in school, we need them there. Trying to think of the other thing, and one of the big things that you're thinking about with eighth grade students, they said student attendance in eighth grade is a better predictor of whether a student will drop out than test scores, which to me, you feel it hits home, that is a huge statistic of students' attendance. And we've got a lot of those students that come from junior high school that are T-nine, or those ones are already over age, and at one point, we looked at the percentage of ours graduating, which is horrible, their attendance. So we've really got to target some of those grades, and also with third grade, I know the Ms. Green will tell you with those second and third grade, if they're not coming, then they're not reading on grade level, they're not doing math, if they can't do math facts, it's just a big, huge thing. And like I said, we are just luck nonetheless that we got Mr. Glass at FENS that helps us with all this, and we've got great principals that are really gonna combat. The only thing I worry about is our principals got so much on their plate that they're being thrown this, the state is giving us guidance, you have to do this at three days, do this at five days, do this at seven days, it is a lot. And we know we're not reinventing the wheel, we know how hard it is, and we're gonna be there supporting, so we're not expected to be perfect, because to me, I would like to get about ninety-four, ninety-five, that would be great to be back where we used to be. So hopefully, we're gonna kind of get there. But I'm really excited about it, I mean, it's really a good thing, and I think it's gonna really help us with all kinds of strategies to help us on what to do here and how to do that, so excited, excited. Anybody else want to kind of put anything in there? None? Barrett, you want to say anything about anything that you've been kind of meeting with us?
It's your turn.
But if you got any questions or anything, if y'all want to know anything that's really going on, or got any help, one of the things that they said we can reach out is to community, even churches, or preachers and other things that people have an issue with some of the kids that are at church, whatever they need, so like I said, I think it's really gonna help us. I'm excited to actually have guidance, there's actually some guidance for attendance that helps us with those things. In the past, it's just been, you know, Bonnie, I go in here or there, houses, houses, houses and visits, and the colleagues can't find anybody, so I think so is right. So I'm excited about it. I know you gotta say something. I know you want to say something.
I'm tired, man. No, no, Nick, seriously, no, I would ask that you show the board the chart, how we design, you know, everything, because like Angela said, in my opinion, it's much too much for teachers to be doing. They already have all of this other stuff, and this is just another added to it, it's gonna make it complicated. So I think when we hear complaints, we may need to be more sympathetic to teachers because this is something that I wouldn't want them to do. I wish we had controllers that they didn't have to do it, but it's a lot involved.
This part here?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So we did, we met and came up, whoops, came up with this chart of, okay, what are we doing? The top is the sixth grade, six through twelve. We started off at nine through twelve and then decided to add junior high in with it, but after one unexcused absence, what are we doing? The teacher is welcome the student back, remind you to bring your excuse. Second unexcused absence, high school team, coach head, and Charlie Amos and Marcia Johnson are tag teaming that to meet with the students. We have document that's in that power of presence handbook that Angela referred to, to find out why is the kid not coming? Is the kid not coming because they can't, are they struggling with the younger sibling trying to get them to school, are they sick, do they not have the clothes, do they not have the food, are they avoiding something? So we really liked that document because it's trying to find out why a kid is not coming to school.
How, how many days are you looking at before they get involved?
That, that's, yeah, so that's on day two.
Oh, day two.
And we backed that up because the state told us when you have to start turning things over to FENS and then the district attorney's office.
And the state, and I want to say so everybody knows, the state is monitoring attendance, like, I guess there were some districts that were needing to turn attendance in, and even Katie and Jay on the meeting, of course, we're turning in attendance, but they are monitoring our attendance, they are seeing what we're doing. So, you know, parents, if they're listening, that's another issue to get their kids, because we had to kind of back our stuff up because you got to realize that the high school and then some of the junior high, on the chronic units, on the fifth day, you fail. So that's why we had to really back it up with, really start day one, which, you know, that's one absence.
But that's three days after each, each day, so that means on day one, one, two, three, because they got three days to return the excuse absence, so that person is gonna be responsible for doing all this extra stuff.
And like I said, it's a lot, and as I say, that's what I'm saying, there's a lot on their place too, so we're gonna help them as best we can, do the best we can, and it's not gonna be perfect.
I remember y'all putting out attendance last year, you know, so, I mean, we, y'all have started.
Yeah.
Y'all always seem to be like a steeplehead. Y'all, y'all really do, I don't know if you've got a drift of it coming up or whatever, but y'all always seem to be just a steeplehead.
I was really excited after Teacher Leader, you asked Barrett, I called him during the meeting and told him what was going on because I was excited, I was like, wow, they're having to get some information to help us. I mean, they've broken everything down, it's pretty really easy, it's just sometimes finding people, they move so much and numbers change and things, it's going to be hard sometimes to get touch with parents.
You got your guidance?
But we actually got guidance, which is like, wow, this is amazing, so I'm really excited, I called them, like, wow, this is great, so.
You check the box and say you did it.
It is, it's just, it's just gonna be a lot, like I said, it's gonna be a work in progress, but I'm really excited and hopefully, and like I said, we're still at ninety-two, ninety-two point four five, so we're not in danger, but, I mean, of course, we want everybody, we want to get back up to that ninety-four, ninety-five where we used to be before COVID, so. And that's gonna help our students become productive citizens where they go work at the bank, or they go workplace that they come to work. So their expectation is that we got to make them whether it's a workforce, so we're hoping that it's all gonna help.
We're training adults.
It is, it's just a lot, it's a lot of work, but there's no more days where you can just sit home and not come to school anymore, because like I said, the state is monitoring everything we're doing, we're doing regional meetings, they're coming, they're actually gonna send people from state farm in to meet with us to see what we are doing. So it's, we gotta be going.
It sounds like they made me test them the doctors too, one of those sixty.
And that's what we really got to get guidance on, because I know some of y'all, some of y'all are thinking though, I got doctor's excuses, so they're not gonna do anything, but that chronic absenteeism, they're really getting hold it and they are truancy now. So they're really starting to monitor that, so I know we've been in touch with some of the doctors, some of the dentists about doing that, but that's a touchy subject. Now, just remember though, if you've got somebody that really is chronically absent, they're gonna have a healthcare plan, they're gonna have an IP, they're gonna have something saying that they may have asthma, they may have diabetes, so they're gonna already have that healthcare plan, or they should, if they really got something that's really going on with them. So it's gonna be.
Anyway, that's just kind of a generic, that's what the chart is, then we have it for the elementary too. Little bit different approach because with high school kids, a lot of them are driving themselves to school, but with the elementary, you're depending on parents too, so, I'm glad you said to share that, so.
I think what Judge and I one hundred percent agree at is that on the chronic absenteeism, there's no law that's being broken. So why is this burden being put on the system to monitor something that they have no control over, there's no law being broken, what's the end game? What's the end game? Nothing.
I think the end goal is to get kids to school so that we can educate them and ensure that if you have a chronically absent, you know, absenteeism problem, that we're finding a solution for how we can get you, because I could not pass chemistry if I weren't in class learning chemistry every day. So it's, it's hard to teach kids to read if you're not there, and I know Maria and Kim and the elementary principals can tell you, you, you sit in those meetings and you've got them in intervention, you've got them, you get, you pull out here and you're pushing in here, but when you're not ever in school, it, it don't matter how much we provide, you have to be there to receive, so. I agree, I agree, and I don't know that we, we, what to do there, I think education at this point is just, we want you at school, we want you to want to come to school rather than be sent. Anything else there?
I've got a question, number four where it says possible home visit, who can go do the home visit?
Bonnie and I, we've been doing home visits already, and a lot of that happens, because we, it's a lot of parents change numbers, when they see school calling, guess what? Thing is, I'm just gonna be honest, so Bonnie and I go out and take the attendance log, and just got to go to the house and kind of say, hey, what's going on, are you in school? See if they're living there, if they moved, so Bonnie and I go do all that, and KJ's gonna help us some this year, because he's kind of helping Bonnie, but it's me and him, we use it always, it's a new home visit, so. We've been doing that for years.
Also, as the number six usually takes place at number four, to the mandatory conference.
Yeah, yeah, right, so we've been doing that, that's nothing new, it's just, because a lot of times, they change numbers, and you know, no father's at home, and just seeing what's going on, and sometimes we be pulled up in the cop car, and the judge is in. I'm just gonna be honest, so that kind, because I used to go in my car all the time, I used to do all this without anybody, but I don't do it anymore, but now we're kind of going his car, because I know that's six of presidents, so, you know.
Anything else?
Anything else? All right, then let's move on to item F on the agenda, and I'm gonna, you explain this. Job description from the pre-ETS transition specialist.
All right, so those are the job descriptions that I sent y'all earlier this week, this actually falls under Ms. Merrick's program with her special needs students. The one that is the pre-EDS transition specialist, that is a teacher job description, this is the role that Michelle Lindsay actually holds. She's just been operating under a teacher job description, and this came out at the summer, Rebecca learned about it at one of her meetings, and was like, this actually is more about what she does, and so we just wanted to adopt this position.
And this is just an addendum?
This is just, yeah, it's just the same position, no, it's not a new position, it's one that's already been filled, it's just a better job description that fits. And this position as well as the other one are funded seventy-four pers, oh, can you text me? Seventy-six percent is funded by Louisiana Rehabilitation Services, and so the other twenty-four percent is our general fund, but a lot of that twenty-four percent is billable through high cost services. So the chances that we're gonna have to pay twenty-four percent are slim, but that would be the most that we pay out of that. But it is absolutely necessary for our students, especially our students with disabilities, to transition into the workforce.
So favor tomorrow, just in case we have to pay that twenty-four percent, just let us know what that may be.
Okay, okay, okay. You're all, we're already doing that here, but I guess you could go back and look and see what was not billed out of high cost services for that position. The next one, the assistant, is a new position that we qualified for, it's paying the same, the seventy-six percent, the other part, high cost services, but it is an assistant who can assist those students in the cafe. Kristi, you ain't go talk a little bit, are you, no, okay. Okay, this is Rebecca's, this is Rebecca's, and she's tied up dealing with something else, but it's trying to work with students, especially those with disabilities and pre-employment transition, ensuring that they have the supports to learn the skills that are gonna be needed for them to be gainfully employed.
And Nick, this person will report to Rebecca, I'm assuming?
The principal or the. Um, the principal or the designated, so it would be a high school employee, but just like Ms. Lindsay, she pretty much does double duty there.
Because I, I thought initially that the person was supposed to report to, uh, Rebecca. You know? Yeah, that's what I thought.
Where's it say that?
Last, very last sentence.
Performance in this position is evaluated by the director of special education.
So is that, is that what you want? Or you wanna change?
I can change, um, principal and put, um, director of special education.
I mean, it's, it's whatever you, I'm, I'm just making sure that, that we're putting what you want in here because I, I knew that, uh, the person.
If she's gonna be evaluating, I think that makes sense. Yeah.
Well, Laina, you looking surprised, what do you, what's your thought?
No, I can get, I heard about, yeah. I just know that she, they're already on our campus, so I think.
Yeah.
The reason I said principal is just because, because they're on our campus, so that they, if something happens as far as personnel.
I, I, I'm gonna say principal slash director of special education. Good, I will, I'll make those changes. Y'all go ahead and approve it with changes.
All right, you go ahead and get a motion on this?
Okay, sorry.
Do what?
I, I talked about them together, but they're actually separate items.
Well, yeah, but we talked about it.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the job description for the pre-ETS transition specialist.
You got some, pay the message? All right, favor? Uh, next one, G, we need a motion.
Motion. So for the job description for the, um, assistant?
All right, favor? All right, next is what we've talked about earlier with the, uh, this building there. This age will consider and vote on the resolution to declare right-of-way access and property to three twenty-six car and drive and surplus and for sale of property using the services of a licensed real estate broker for building and grounds committee recommendations. And I guess we'll need to talk about that first. And then we'll give it to the rest.
After the right-of-way and the building.
How are they, we made reference. How are they, you can have. Yeah, I, I've already, you're ready, okay. So put one down for, for them.
Move the purple line, the right leg, that purple present, the bigger piece of property size, the one we just bought. And probably just a small square, that's the building, that I could purchase.
So Brandon, I, I have absolutely zero idea of what's going on, so why are we selling, uh, considering selling, uh, property that, uh, we have now? What's, what's the logic?
Well, we discussed this and we discussed an end, I guess an end final, right? Just to discuss.
As long as we get cash for it any time, it's, it's a big change.
And you see that right there where it says hub? That, that's what it's all about, is that, that, that facility right there, that they're talking about putting in. And it's, uh, basically an activities building, a religious-based activities building, um.
Stephen, is there a point to discuss what, what that building is for?
I think the question is why, what we considering selling it? And the way I understand that, Baron, is the building is horrible.
Asbestos, isn't it?
It's got asbestos in it, it's not doing us any good. And, uh, that, that's the number one reason we're selling it. And I guess it helps the hub, uh, as far as, uh.
What, what is the hub?
The hub is a new place, we're gonna talk about building, he's gonna talk about that in a minute.
So, I don't, so the youth development of America is the nonprofit and we wanna build, uh, a metal building right here uh, for, uh, everything from after-school tutoring to job skill training to transportation issues, character building, fourth quarter, workforce development, uh, just a whole bunch of ACT prep, everything that you can imagine, after-school activities, uh, based for, so the students can actually just walk over. Um, so we don't wanna lose kids from the, the high school, going to the church, or going to somebody else's base. We wanna be able to have a partnership with the school that we could have after-school activities for the youth.
We, uh, looked at a lot of different sites for this, but we call this the best one for kids that don't have a ride. That can just walk right there from junior high or high school. One of the reasons we're wanting to purchase this building is to be the perfect park, parking lot, and it'll be a liability, it's a liability for us and the school system. This building is no value.
Baron, I think that, I think that building's right there.
Yeah, I'm gonna exactly what's this.
It's right there, and the thing about it, if kids are in that hub building, they're gonna wanna go and water and try to go in this old vacated building. And we don't want taking any chance of anybody getting hurt or being where they shouldn't be.
It is full of, um, it's, it houses all the old technology right now.
Yeah, let me, let me just explain for a minute. I'm, I'm not against anything that you're doing. My principle has always been whatever school property we have, it's preserved. Uh, we had asbestos at Union Central, we got the building torn down, we didn't sell the property. So I'm always against it, I like that, but I like the concept, I like everything that you're doing. So I'm not gonna vote no against it.
Right.
Uh, but I'm gonna maintain my principle, which I'm gonna abstain from it. So I'm hoping that this right here could be something that's, uh, very advantageous to the parents because it's something that we need. Uh, if there's anything I think that the school, uh, can do, so I'm assuming this is not gonna be, this will no longer be school board property.
So it's, it's what, point two five acres?
Yes, around plus or minus about a quarter of an acre and another, um.
And, and what we're talking about doing is putting a parking lot. So it's gonna be basically four and a half foot parking lot. So it would be, so the school could use it for parking as well for, for students.
So we overflow parking. So there's gonna be some type of in-agency agreement or this is just gentleman's agreement or what?
Well, we, we would be, yes, absolutely, yes, there will be an, yes, we'll have to do that. And one of the things that was brought up in the committee meeting was that if something happens and the hub doesn't make it, that we get the, we have.
It reverses back?
Yes.
First right of refuse.
Yeah, first right of refuse over there.
So, let me, let me make sure I heard what I need to hear. There will be an in-agency agreement between you guys and the school, what you just sold.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's all I need to know.
And, and the parking lot.
And parking.
Tell me about the parking lot, because I've got some concerns.
Uh, gravel lot, I think is what we talked about originally. So it's over there with the, the current lots or, or the gravel lots right there.
Is it the gravel pit where they park?
Uh, and what we're gonna do is just extend it out, so.
We don't wanna people be parking right there and taking up kids' parking spots.
Correct.
So is the hub gonna have parking out in front of it and this is just?
It's a whole lot of, oh, it's a lot.
That's right.
So are y'all gonna use the driveway for the high school to get into it?
Yes, we would like to.
Because y'all are gonna try to buy another piece of property to go to the hallway, but.
Correct.
Okay. So y'all will use the driveway, okay.
And, um, you'll see, kind of, on the property that we bought, we got highlighted, it actually came with a house. So we're actually trying to search for, hopefully like a teacher to possibly rent it, that's what we'd like. And we're hoping that's gonna generate us some income for like a groundskeeper. But that would be our goal, somebody from the school system to rent this house. And that would give us some income to upkeep the property.
What's the, uh, protection plan completion? You have any idea?
Uh, it's gonna be a metal building, we're hoping to get it done this year or next, so it's gonna be a very quick deal. So they're gonna start clearing the lot as soon as we get, um, the right-of-way access to get in there and start clearing the lot out. I'm gonna tell them they can't do it during school week, so it's gonna be one of those things where they have to do it on Mondays or something like that.
What's projection cost?
A million dollars.
It's gonna be very nice.
It's supposed to be around four thousand square feet is what we've got.
And it's gonna have. This is a general kind of layout.
There's a general layout that we, that's, that's the initial layout that we went with so far.
It will have, you know, restrooms, this is the, um, one sixty-five side and this will be the school side. You've got restrooms, you've got gaming areas and, and tables and chairs, this is a stage area. But this can also serve as like, um, auditorium seating so that you can have events that have a stage and, and activities there. And then this is a covered outdoor area where there's picnic tables. These, I think, are roll-up doors so that you can do the, you know, indoor-outdoor and have just, you know, things going on here and a little warming kitchen and an office space. Um, and then some storage. At one time we talked about a pickleball court, we may or may not. And these are not the final plans, this is just kind of all of the committee putting together there is about, you know, what they have. The students actually, we gave them a survey, they told us what they wanted and where they would come and, and, and we built this idea around what they said they wanted.
Does the pickleball court be like that behind the tennis courts or would it be?
This would be like over toward the water area, I mean, if, if that took place. This would be facing the tennis courts, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So the outdoor seating would be facing the tennis court.
All right, still, I wanna go back to the parking lot. That parking lot we have is, uh, still, you parked in it. Uh, it's pretty, pretty bad, not very nice at all. Matter of fact, if you were really looking for something that Caldwell Perry's High School to have an eyesore about, it would be that parking lot. So as a board member, I'm sitting here trying to figure out how in the heck we can get our parking lot to look a little better. And with a projection cost of a million dollars, I wouldn't want an old ratty parking lot right behind my building either. So if y'all can tell me, we're not gonna get one load of gravel from, uh, the peanut car and spread it out and let that be it, I'm okay with it. But I, I would like for you guys to say, hey, let's do a little bit more service with the school and fix the parking lot. Whatever y'all write into that, I ain't, I mean, I don't, I'm not legal and not near as smart as, uh, as our superintendent on stuff like that, but I know she'll stand up for that, so. That's the only question I have, is I want the parking lot better. I don't want one load of gravel scattered out all over the parking lot and we didn't get anything out of it other than getting rid of a nasty building.
Well, uh, to my knowledge, the in-kind donation would have to at least be equivalent to the value of the property, which is seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay, so what you're saying is?
And, and, yeah.
Seventy-five hundred dollars plus seventy-five hundred dollars?
No, seventy-five hundred dollars worth of gravel. Yes, to begin with, but, you know.
Brandon, with seventy-five hundred dollars worth of gravel, do us a decent, good parking lot?
That'd be a lot of rock.
Is it a lot of rock? As long as we get it looking good there, and that makes me feel, I mean, I want, I want Nicky to be able to look at people and say, yep, we sold this property. We got this out of it, it helped our high school, it makes that whole area look better and we got rid of a nasty building.
And what, the, the players. We talked about this parking lot in the meeting, in the committee meeting.
Yep.
And, and we talked about, that's where we park our buses during the summer. So it's not gonna be something, it's just, we, we can't have something that's just go in there, dump, spread and say, we need a, we, we, we need to change what we have. Like I said, we got, we got a piece of nothing there, we make, we, we need to make it better.
Yeah.
And we need to have it also, where we can park our buses and have a plan as far as the way that parking lot's gonna be done. Not just, you know, take out, take out those old, those old telephone poles and spread around stuff like. Need to have a.
Cause well, it'd be somebody great for y'all to talk to.
We want it to be somewhere nice with.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, we don't want it to be looking dumpy or anything like that.
Yeah.
Nick, I, I thank, uh, police juror, Chamber of Commerce, you know, industrial board, all these people will be able to benefit from this building.
Absolutely.
So, so maybe, uh, you know, you guys get together, sit down and talk and come up with what somebody may be willing, interested to donate, kind of get, you know, cooperative endeavor agreements with people. Because it's gonna benefit now, this right here is gonna be something that's beneficial for the parents. So I think if the police juror can contribute with the parking lot and all this other kind of stuff, maybe, uh, with the cars donating or whatever, you know, you get the National Guard. People can do that because you don't want something, uh, one hundred percent done and it's fifty percent, uh, you know, less complete. So I guess my other question is, I would much rather not know what I know rather than doing a type sales, if we can do an in-kind donation. Uh, you know, do that as long as the clause is there, that, uh, it reverses back in the event with the first option. Uh, and a couple other little things, so Nick, before this is done, uh, I'd like to make sure that those things are there, but I congratulate you guys. And, uh, I can see a lot of benefit that it's gonna be for, uh, kids that may not get meals served at home.
Absolutely.
Uh, during the weekends, school is out, they can go there, uh, maybe the community can pitch in. Uh, we don't have places for events to take place, uh, so I mean, it's, it's kind of like.
All of those reasons are exactly why we need this to happen.
With what Baron's saying, is there any way we can, is there any reason why that's not written in right now? I mean, what, what, how long will it take to get?
Well, it's just amount of guys getting it together.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's drawn up.
So our next board meeting, we did vote this right in.
Yeah. Because I, I wouldn't wanna hold him up.
Yeah.
I would just, the quickest way.
We've been waiting since January for nonprofits, guys.
Yeah, we finally got approved for nonprofit from the IRS.
Five oh one, C three. We just bought this property here, I think, last, last week. But, you know, this is definitely a, a huge win for the parish and it's at zero cost to taxpayers.
Absolutely, no cost to taxpayers.
And very fortunate for this opportunity.
Y'all have done something that fifty years somebody couldn't do. And it's, it's, and it's needed, so, uh, again, the vision is there.
Absolutely. I think it was kind of meant to be and this location is just perfect because the kids can walk right to it. The ones that don't have a ride after school, they can just walk right there.
We, we were so worried about losing, we don't wanna lose kids.
Right, right.
And if it's right there where they can see it and they say, okay, I just, I wanna go over there after school, you know, there's tutoring, there's people over there that can have good homework, that we can, we can come alongside the kids and, and sort of help the education system, that's what we wanna do there.
Nick, again, the paper's not here, so I don't know how it's gonna be written up, but I, 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 I would like for there to be a headline that, uh, you guys get whatever, uh, you need, you know, there, whatever images or whatever, because again, this is something that should have been done years ago. It didn't happen, hopefully can happen now, but I think the parish and the people that's here, uh, should really be aware that there's something that could actually change, uh, the dynamics of it to parish. So hats off to, you know, you guys again.
The town is male or male is the town?
Okay, so do we wanna approve this, do we wanna vote on this resolution as it stands contingent to a couple of the items that we talked about as far as the, uh?
We can just add, add that it will be an in-kind and we preserve, preserve the first right of.
Well, the, the resolution is to the approval that we're going to not do a public bid, a public auction or a sealed bid, but it will hire and approve, approve the real estate agent. That's all, that's all the resolution.
David, we're, we're following the context of what the law.
I, I asked John Geis to speak, so that's what they're sending me, I didn't know that we had.
Brandon, I would like to make a motion.
I'll say.
All right, favor?
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
All right, national agenda, we're, uh, considering a vote on declaring property surplus to, uh, sell six buses and one truck. And you have a list of them, in your packet? James, Jared, I guess James will inform us about.
Yes, sir, we need to put those items up for auction. They are gonna cost more to try to repair than I think y'all wanna pay according to Mr. Son Yeh. Uh, and it, it, it's just too much labor and too much for parts to try to get.
Get up to buy another bus?
Hopefully see.
Maybe, maybe help, maybe help pay for a lease.
No, I would really like to add that, you know, though this is gonna be thought of as surplus property, these are really good buses that, um, that I think that somebody that bids on them, I'll give us a really good fair price.
So we can reject the first offer, right?
Yeah.
David, I think when we did this in twenty-three, I think we got seventy-five hundred dollars, I, I think, something like that.
For all of them?
Yeah.
Interested in captain, you give one, fix it up, hit the road.
So they need to contact you? They, they need to contact.
You'll have to do it, put it up.
Yeah, it has to be, be a possibility.
Because I know somebody who's been worrying the hell out of me about the next time a bus.
Shoot you an email if they have a bus.
Okay.
Got the buses in one truck, so are we, are we in agreement that that's what we're gonna do on this? We need to put it forward motion.
I'll make a motion.
Can I make a motion?
All in favor?
You, you second it, believe me?
I can, yes. No kidding, I could choose somebody.
Now we're moving on to the, uh, we're moving on to the, uh, to the meat house, considering a vote on declaring property surplus, advertise, sell the meat house equipment. And, um, and I guess whatever happens to be in the meat house from what I can imagine. It's not just a way.
Did you go look?
But, uh, apparently there's quite a, quite a lot of cautious stuff that's in there.
Maybe we should have a estate sale.
I know, a estate sale.
So, Jake, do you know what's in there? Do we have, I know.
Uh, I'm not going in there.
When I went, Jeff took me, because I had always heard about it. When I went in, like, they still had the stuff on the walls from Meat orders back from the early nineties. But there was old desks that were broken, there's old weight equipment that is rusted, it's like, oh, where all things go to die. All, yes, it's, it's terrible, and a lot of it is also vandalized. So the windows are broken. So the windows are broken, things are, because it's just, you know, it's just a problem waiting to, and we just need to get rid of all this stuff.
Someone wanted to get rid of the stuff that's in it. Do we know what we're going to do with the building afterwards? No. We haven't got there yet.
We haven't, but when we get it cleaned out, we can make some plans. It could be, it could be a proper storage building for all its storage. Cause you do have, I mean, like, homecoming risers and, and all that kind of stuff that you have to have a place to not be out on the web. And that's how this all kind of brought up, when we were trying to get some stuff in there and there's no room to store any things, so, yeah.
Well, I make a motion. I'm all backing it.
All in favor?
I love cleaning up old buildings.
Who knew?
I want to get stuff out of there and get it out.
You retired, right? David, are you tomorrow morning?
We can send Melinda to inventory it all. Or David to put it up.
I can't bring Saber, we'll be quiet.
All right, we're moving on with the page. Uh, on the agenda, we're going to consider and vote on amending the fiscal year twenty-five budget to move a hundred and forty, eighty-four thousand of capital expenditures from Fund Zero Zero One, General Fund, Fund Zero Zero Four, which is the maintenance.
Okay, uh, you have this page in front of you, uh, I will take. And James did an outstanding job this past year in, uh, in, in fund, they work, making a fund, has a surplus in that fund of a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And buses can be moved over there to, uh, be a part of that cost. So that's what I'm proposing. And in doing so, that also makes our seventy percent, let's say, our people's.
Instructional.
Instructional costs, uh, it secures that. So that's the, uh, we'll do the same thing with insurance, we'll move insurance over there, but we do give them cash for that.
Say it one more time, David.
Okay.
There's a, a seventy percent threshold that we are monitored by the state, that we have to make sure that of the money that we receive from MFP, we're spending at least seventy percent on instruction. So moving those buses over helps us meet that seventy percent because the purchases of buses are not instruction.
And I, I think that's the purpose of the bonus fund in a general sense, is to keep the general fund being able to meet that seventy percent at any school board you will have. Uh, I mean, we're not, I'm not just talking about across the state, I think everybody has a maintenance fund. So, uh, would assume that was the original intent, was to keep that bill, that flexibility to where maybe we can dump stuff over there.
David, to prevent me from asking ten questions.
Okay.
There's nothing hidden in this. I mean, we, we doing what we need to do.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'm good.
All right, all right.
All right, you gonna make a motion to approve this?
I make a motion.
I second.
All in favor? Now, we just, we just stick with no for the final?
At least you want that different of a budget. What move in that?
Oh, well, we'll get to that right now.
Okay.
I'll hand them out. Uh, page one of four, this is General Fund, Fund Zero Zero One. Column C is where we were at just a few seconds ago. We were six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar deficit for the general fund. Now we're in column B where we have moved, uh, that hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars over, we're now at minus four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that's approved.
So every month is coming down? Every month it has come down?
Uh.
In reverse?
Yes. So we started the year at nine hundred thousand dollar deficit. We revised the budget down to seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. We landed at six twenty-four, and now we're at four forty. All, all those numbers are on that page.
So before we approve next year's budget, which is next month, right? How much more, because remember, I said that I wouldn't vote unless it was zero, uh, uh, less than. But I, I can see where we're going, and we are going in the right direction. I don't think we're going to get to zero. Uh, how, how close you think we're going?
I don't know.
David assures me.
Twenty-five, but I've not looked at twenty-six. But I know that Nicky's original, uh, game plan that, you know, was, um, May, June, April, May, it looked right. So I think we're in good shape as far as zero, I, that's our goal.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm trying to be cooperative, but, but at the same time, uh, I think Mr. Martin said the same thing, uh, it's because of the concern, but, uh, again, in all fairness, it is going in the right direction. Which, which is a good thing, which is a positive thing. So I'm not saying I'm not going to vote against it. I just would like to make sure that we do everything that we can do to get as close to, uh, that as possible, because we got, uh, other things that are coming up in the very near future that could be affected by what that number may or may not be.
I, I agree. And in fact, you look at that top line, uh, well, line three thousand is the second line on that page. That's the MFP. We have dropped, in the far right column, column F, we were twelve million four forty-four last year, and this year we're at twelve million one seven one, I mean, that's a two hundred, something like thousand dollar decrease just on the MFP.
Last year, we don't know this year's.
Yeah. So, and we did factor in a decrease when we were talking about in April and May, um, where we would be. So I mean, that, that part has already been factored in.
So what's, what's the student count now?
Angela's monitoring it.
When I looked, I looked, cause the MFP doesn't involve the, you know, the H Star, the pre-K, or even pre-K. I looked, I think, when I added up, we were right at thirteen thirteen, I think. Um, the high school was down, which is very concerning, because we usually never start under four hundred.
What, what's that number?
We were at three eighty-six, like yesterday, I look.
We still, she's still like.
She's still at three of those. Um, but we do have one or two that are dropping, so I've never, since I've been here, known that the high school was ever under four hundred. So that's concerning to me, is that the high school always sets that precedence, and we, our first had a little four seventy-five way, so it's, it's down, which is.
So I mean, and it, and it can be, I guess, considered multiple contributing factors to.
Yeah, of course.
Uh.
Yeah, but we have laws.
The eighth graders that went to ninth grade was a very small class, it was only about ninety kids. So that's extremely low, um, so that contributed as well.
So David, what, what is the actual number per student, eight thousand something?
Eight thousand, people have.
So a hundred students would be eight hundred thousand, right?
Uh, yes.
Close to it.
Are we, do you feel like we're down to a hundred students?
Oh, I don't know. I'm just.
Yeah, I just, just use that as a maybe, yeah, cause it was, it was three eighty, uh, it's three eighty this year, what was it last year, you know what I mean?
It was, we were just under four hundred.
Yeah, we always, we always, sometime, yearly we've been dropping, but we've never started under four hundred till I've been. We always were over when we started.
We were over four hundred.
But this is the first year we've ever started under, under four hundred.
So in, in a student that goes to Old Belt or wherever, that's, that's a contributing factor.
Or, and virtual academy, or homeschool.
Right.
I mean, any student we lose.
Do we have a lot that homeschool, maybe, no?
I've had probably, maybe, high school students, only about four or five, I mean, um, and we've had some younger ones, but we've also gained some acts from some other places too, so.
Yeah, cause I placed my test at about nine years last week.
But the high school, it's, it's always.
And I'm almost certain it's, it's hard to convince a mind made up that they want homeschooling.
Well, we have a lot of kids that are telling their parents what they want to do is what's happening now, so, um, cause I tried to say, you know, look, can you teach them that, can you do this, or you sure, or you sure you can do this, but please make sure it's accredited, so when they want to come, cause they're going to want to come back at some point most of the time.
So when they homeschool, is that counted against?
Not counted against, it's, it's not, it doesn't count against us if they're homeschooling, but we're not getting them any fee money.
Right.
Which is not covered one.
So if they homeschool, do anybody get them any fee though?
Apparently.
Well.
No, not apparently. It depends, now, if they do University View, or if they do something like that, then that money goes to them.
And we do have that. How many students do we have?
Uh, I don't know, but the, the last line, nine hundred, nine, uh, non-transferred, non-public, that's having twenty-two thousand.
If they're doing their own homeschooling program, no, they don't get any of the fee. Like, they're doing it themselves. Like, we have a lot of them that don't make up, or have school, and they do it. But, but if they're going to University View or some of these other places that are public charter or whatever, that we do.
So like David said, this past year, we lost a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to students.
Which is a lot of money. Yeah.
Angela, that thirteen thirteen number, that's the amount of kids we have right now, or last year?
Yeah, and I have to go look, man, that's, yeah, I'm just saying this year, when I was looking, I'm pretty sure I can go pull it up, cause I got it on the.
How hard is, how hard would it be to go twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-three?
That's easy.
Can you get that for me? I'd just like to see what the last five years look like.
So I'll go back to that.
This takes a two.
Well, just out of curiosity, what is the number of our eighth grade class this year, this year?
I'm going to say it's big class.
No, it's around a hundred, it's.
But that's pretty big for us.
Yeah, well, our sixth grade is four, two, uh, yeah.
And I got the, I've been kind of monitoring like every week to see if we're going up or down, up or down. I know elementary students would kind of enroll by the year. So, um, that's the kind of, which I.
They're always good starters.
Never, ever started over four hundred and five.
Just looking at the picture that y'all posed, you know, for the first day, it looked like the sophomore class was our biggest class.
Cause last year, that was, we, we were supposed to be eleven, eleven.
I've seen you, seen you.
Right now it's like eighty-two or eighty-four.
Just because it's a small class.
We read my D and I.
But I have settings.
Eighty-nine, I think I remember eight or nine.
This year we have like eighty-six, eighty-five.
That's, that's, that's low, yeah. So, uh, what, what is it, uh, Bo, you may know, uh, to drop down to, uh, C, I mean, uh, triple A, just go.
What we're like fourteen kids over, four, four twelve.
There's a forty class.
Is, is, and C, you know, at three.
I'll bet three eighty, if, if three eighty-six, you probably.
And how's.
This is a vice patient.
Yeah, and we, we, we had what, three to six?
Three and six.
Forty to eleven, but that's, but that's where Nicky's right.
Numbers are changing every day, cause she's, those kids I placed my test at their shores on in yet, so she's got about four shifted names to the wrong.
So it can fluctuate, okay. So it, it, the user levels out when, November, December?
October.
October one.
I'm saying.
But when do the numbers like?
Kind of flatten out.
Yeah. Yeah, usually by the first of September.
Really, okay. Cause like I said, I was just wondering, again, every eighth hour we use comes from us. So we, from what I'm saying, we don't need to lose anything if we can save. You know, so I, I just kind of curious of what, what may be the material factor.
It's just pre-K.
All right. Well, we'll have more of those.
So right now, the number is fourteen eleven, but that includes our, our.
Pre-K.
Pre-K and H Star, so.
Do we get MFP money for?
If they have an IEP.
So I mean, I got an IEP.
It's not, it's not, they're not getting money yet.
Two, three?
No.
I think there's going to be a lot. But a lot of those are in process right now, like, um, bus staff starts with this kind of thing.
So do we have a hundred and twenty-two thousand worth? I, I guess I asked that question.
No, no, I don't think it's a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
So how many do you think? Just forget.
Cause I mean, it really not a, that matter.
Twenty, twenty.
Yeah.
Twenties, pre-k, pre-K kids with a.
Pre-K and Kelly, too, right, yeah. Three, and, three and four year olds.
With IEPs.
Last year, at the end of the year, we had, when T, we, we had done twenty-three evaluations, and that aren't really taught to, so.
Well, we went to the little thing that Monica had for those kids, and there was like eighty families showed up. I mean, it was awesome. There were some kids running everywhere.
They were, yeah.
They were.
That was really a good deal.
It was, it was a very good deal.
Well, Nick, that's your paper, Rick, you can handle that.
All right. Give you Lisa.
All right.
Uh, still on General Fund, uh, column C, I have that five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar highlight that we got. Uh, some of that, or most of that is, uh, therapy, Medicaid-type services, and that's going to be reimbursable. And this is the first year we have that much in that. We're back up, and, uh, Nicky had talked, and we moved more of the cost over in the General Fund, which makes it more reimbursable. So we're kind of, you know, the first year is where we get hit, and then the following years, you know, get revenue from that five hundred and five from Medicaid, which offsets the future cost, you know, the cost of that future unit. So we're, we're in better.
Depending on the service and the, the employee status, we get between seventy-six and fifty percent of those costs back, but it's different with the service and the employees, so it's kind of hard to say exactly how much.
So we have a number on that, you know, but, so the bottom line is that four forty, had we been able to re, we're, uh, trying to, trying to, had we been able to re, uh, receive that money of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, whatever that portion is, our four forty would have been less. But they're about, the auditors are about a year behind, which is Medicaid audit, which not our internal auditors. So that, that's a no, right. Uh, the blue dots at the bottom is all the funds that make up the General Fund. What all we're talking about in here is Fund One, but we also have Fund Twenty, which has no, no activity. Twenty-one is the Medicaid fund. I've zeroed that one out this year, just to make it a little bit easier on, on this funny thing. Seventy-five is non-public tax book, and that's about two thousand dollars, that's an in and out every year. Our career development fund, that's Christie's, uh, fund that she manages stipends, uh, that had five hundred thousand dollars go in and out this year, uh, differentiated compensation. We had to spend that remaining twelve thousand dollars, so that went away. Uh, we're supposed to get more money in that year, this year. And we're supposed to be getting more stipend money in at some point this year, so, and that has a timeline of paying out by December, quick danger. So same thing, two thousand, one thousand. Uh, sales tax funds on the next page. We finished the year at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar surplus, so we have a little bit extra money that I realized that we would have. So that, that's favorable. And again, like Johnny said, uh, at the very bottom line, we had two million nine ten this year, last year we were two million nine oh nine, so we have a four hundred dollar surplus, uh, additional revenue, if you didn't have a lot of cash.
So David, this is not the fund where the sales taxes should come from, right?
That is the fund.
So this, this additional money that's left, that you're talking about, what happens to that? Is, is it going to be distributed out?
Uh, it just carries over into next year, uh, sort of like what we've done in the past, where we had, uh, a very similar amount in the prior year, and at June thirtieth, and we'll use that to pay out, um, Christmas stipends.
So this could be used for something like.
It can be used, uh, by that, yes.
So, uh, your projection is Christmas this year, next year, or?
I, I have no.
Well, what reason why I'm asking, because if it's there and it's available, and it, it can be distributed out to them, then I would prefer to be giving to them, uh, Christmas check or whatever, you guys determine that, but it's, it should be used, is what I'm saying.
And you got to remember that first hundred and thirty was already committed in last night.
Right.
For, for staff, so about two eighty-six, hundred and thirty needs to come off the top, so we have about a hundred and fifty that, you know, we can talk about. I know in, in prior year, we, we've had a similar number, and we've done Christmas bonuses, and we have used more than what was left, so we were able to keep the first check at the same level.
Well, the reason why I'm asking, David, is because we just saw George, and I just happened to run into Kent Faggins, which has got twenty-nine years in the system. You know, they, he doesn't have a supervisor title or anything like that, and I just think, and it's not that we're taking those things for granted, but I don't think we put enough emphasis on, uh, when we have something to reward those people, because they are going above and beyond. Uh, I'm, I'm almost certain, Melissa, you can ask him to do anything that needs to be done, and he's doing it, not just him, but all of these gentlemen. And I got on his board, uh, supporting, support workers, cafeteria workers, and I have, I've never forgotten that. So I just think, when there's something there, uh, if we can look at maybe giving them a reward, even if it's a dollar, but just to let them know that we understand that they are doing things, uh, and if we could do more, we would. So just generosity, I guess is what we're looking at.
And, and, I, I mean, the board has very liberal, uh.
We, we've been very liberal.
Uh, on what y'all can do.
Right.
So, um, I, I mean, I think that would be something that's worth a committee to discuss, and.
I'm always going for that, that's what I've been pushing to pay here, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, if, if, if you're okay with that, Brandon, I would like for you guys to meet and, uh, maybe come back the next meeting, and, uh, cause I, I mean, everything else is going up. Their pay is the same, so they're not able to, and this guy's driving from Gina here, everyday religious, Melissa, I'm almost certain, again, if you need him, he's there. Uh, and I'm almost certain in a general, if, if they're needed, they are doing, going above and beyond. And, uh, Brandon, so if, if you guys don't mind, I don't know who's going to commit it, but, uh, and I'm not talking about giving away what we don't have, but if there's something that we can give, uh, fine, if we can't, at least a thought was there to try to do what we can.
And I think, and I think that's what we're saying, is if we carry this over, you know, we can make up the differences as far as, you know, Christmas funding or, you know, whatever.
And, and the stipends will, uh, have to be paid out by December fifteenth, and Carla and Jenna, uh, were talking about, you know, an ideal date, and they were, and obviously it would be a board decision. But they were looking at, I think, over the fifteenth, which is around the time we get out for Christmas, uh, Thanksgiving, and then that way, you know, it's.
You've got money to go shopping for Christmas.
So.
Yeah, blindfolded.
Uh, it, it's just an idea, and, and again, uh, I think that was more for next board meeting, uh, to be discussed, but.
We'll leave it in October, first, and so, I mean, the, you know, they said, end of August is the first to set out.
Yeah.
Thank you, uh, Brandon.
David, can I ask you about the, uh, the professional services and purchasing of professional services? Uh, we can get anywhere from fifty to seventy percent back on that. When would we get that, and have we ever gotten it before? Uh, we can get anywhere from fifty to seventy percent back on that, when would we get that, and have we ever gotten it before?
Oh, yeah, we've gotten it before, but we've never paid. Uh, this gets into that high-cost services where we were fairly literally reimbursed, and then more schools found out, more school boards found out about it, and started pulling out of that pool, and I don't know the number, but, you know, say, say that it was a million dollars, but we were getting pretty, uh, recovered. And then the volunteer, without us really knowing it, more school boards got into it, and our, in the pool just shrunk on how much we could draw out of it. But Rebecca, I believe, is the one that figured out how to, uh, push it out, off of the general fund, and then we have more ability to get it reimbursed through Medicaid. And that does not have a problem, so that's, that's the benefit, yeah.
Yeah, Medicaid, and Medicaid can only reimburse for services paid for through general fund, they can't anything else, so.
So how quickly can we get that, Rebecca?
Uh, it'll be in this, this week or twenty-six.
Hey, what I'm trying to get at.
Probably.
Can that, can that knock this budget out that Nikki's so ferociously trying to work out, can it, can it help us a little?
Yeah.
It was a big part of the reduction was.
It's a known.
She's, she's strategic in all the things, in trying to help figure out, um, a big part of the budget.
So we can get three-hundred dollars back.
Medicaid and high-cost services.
I had seventy percent.
If, if that's how it goes, then yes.
Have you ever seen that?
No. Well, I'm, I've never gone through this version of it, uh, we've always gone through.
Rebecca, what you think we're gonna get back?
I don't know how much we built.
Five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars.
Oh, I think, yeah, I think we'll get there.
And the auditor, but the audit costs is, I think, not, uh, our outside audit is not limited, I think, so.
And in, in the next fiscal year, it should be even better, because I have more and more employees wanting to go to contract, which on the surface looks, um, you know, not good for us, but actually, they're working almost the same amount of hours, but, uh, and the Medicaid reimbursement rate is much, it's, it's even higher for contracts than it is. So whereas all of our SFPs used to be full-time, now half of them are contract, so we actually get more money back from Medicaid because of some crazy formula today now than we would if they were full-time, and then, of course, David loves that because of the benefits and retirement and all of that, so.
I, I mean, it's just trying to, you know, have a plan, and any progress, so, and, and every year changes, so, I mean, of course, I've been on the other end.
Figuring out what they want.
Truth is accurate.
Well, so you get to zero, David.
It's not my fault. Uh, next fund is lunch fund, uh, originally column nine, the little thing, we throw out with a hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar deficit protection, applies to ninety-five, we cleaned it at seventy-four thousand dollars, uh, I budgeted quite heavily on food costs, thinking we'd have more charges there, uh, and more price, pricing, uh, pricing equation, uh, fortunately, we didn't do it, and I know it seemed was always, you know, really make, taking care of that, making sure nothing is going aways. And finally, the maintenance fund is the last page, and, you know, we talked about that, uh, we moved from column C with a hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-dollar surplus to column D with a forty-seven-thousand-dollar deficit, the fund has a two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-dollar cash balance. So, I mean, it's in, it's in good shape, and again, I thank James for his contribution on that, uh, he said he did not promise it for the future year.
One day or two.
We just, we just have to break, so even though it's already, uh, quite costly, of course. There's no call for James.
Sam, if my recollection serves me right, I think since you've had the job, it's only been like one year that it may have been on the other side. So every year, I mean, you've always done everything that needed to be done, you always sit back, you don't ever say nothing, you know, what is good or bad, so, uh, I, I just think the board need to acknowledge the fact that you are doing as well as everybody else, but I'm no view now, specifically talking about you, because you've done an outstanding, because I look at these things every, every month, even when I don't look at it here, and I've noticed that the lunch form has always been, you know, outstanding, so, because you, you, you came out from Miss Flo, right? You've been doing ten, twelve.
Trial.
Yeah, and that's, that's impressive to go that long with no negatives, so.
And she's, and she's working with a hundred-thousand dollars, you know, pay money versus two-hundred thousand.
Right.
And until two thousand twenty, she was getting two-hundred, and then during the COVID year, she was being reimbursed quite heavily,
and we reduced it to zero essentially, and, and then we bumped it back up to a hundred, and, you know, probably a hundred in the future year. Because the kids still, uh, free lunch, right?
Right.
Different calling.
Right.
And, and that's a testament, I mean, that's a grand, you know, that's a writing, they, you eat breakfast and lunch for free. So, and she reports out every month to the principals what their percentages are for how many kids, because you only get reimbursed if the kid gets a plate, so push those kids and have them, have them eat, it's free. If you don't want to eat it, give it to somebody else.
Yeah, you make more money off of free lunches than you do paid lunches, so even, you know, so that helps a lot too. Um, because you just don't get a, you get a very small reimbursement rate from, um, you know, USDA for a paid lunch, it's under a dollar, where for a free lunch, it's four to five dollars, it goes up every now. So that helps, you know, with that, even with the kids that have to pay, what they pay plus what I get reimbursed is nowhere, is, you know, a lot lower than the free rate.
But that was only during the time. That was only during the time that they had to pay, now nobody pays.
That's what I'm saying, that, that benefits, you know, the children, getting free, plus it benefits the program.
So how many years now have they gotten the free?
Oh.
About six or seven, maybe.
Yeah. Oh, I'm guaranteed, I just rewrote.
Six, three, four years.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll try to, but I'd have to go back.
Emery was great, it was in sixth grade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
About six years. Some of the schools got it before, other.
That's right.
Yeah, but I'm talking about.
Great.
Districts, why?
Uh, that's in about three or four years, yes, because Colombian high school, yeah, Colombian high school did not, yeah.
But definitely.
Sam, you're now free to go get your check from Nikki.
Uh, so that, that's the end of our financial report, I would like to add one thing before we, before we move on from our financial report, and this is this, one thing is that we started last year, when, when we looked at a budget of being in a deficit of nine-hundred thousand that we were having to prove, I would be thinking, good gosh, you know, this is just not right, we shouldn't have to be in this position, and y'all have worked, all y'all in this room have worked so hard, do every little thing, and we've talked about some of the things, that just the little things that add up and add up and add up, and brought that down to four-hundred thousand dollars, which is remarkable, I mean, I think it's just, y'all, y'all brought us back from the abyss, you know, and, 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 and next, and I believe next, you know, when we approve our next budget, you'll see it an even better, it'll be even better then, I believe we will see that zero, and, uh, if not, if not better than that, hopefully, hopefully, and I believe that's what's going to happen.
So Brandon, you, you described.
I just want to thank everybody in this room, everybody, for everything that they've done for this school, and this parent, to, uh, get this budget back and on.
If David, he's describing, we're happy right now, we'll be satisfied as he, that, that's what he just.
I heard him almost bitching to the block.
It's hell's act.
Hey, wait, when, when, anytime it comes to finance, when Nikki come, I always say, well, have you talked to Randy yet? That's the most stuff.
Very true.
Sorry, but that's, that's, that, I'm.
Thank y'all.
Just clear it up.
All right. Hi, Kate, hello, this is it.
I am so excited to report that I went to the junior high in the high school, I can't speak for the elementary schools, but everything is going amazing with the, the pre-dress, the teachers are absolutely loving it. Um, I spoke to the ELA teachers at the high school, and they were discussing, like, it's been able to ha, they've been able to have conversations with kids about their expression of, their freedom of expression, and on their, on their clothes, they said that they, last year, they used to go, good morning, you're in the wrong shirt, and this year they're like, good morning, I love your shirt, and so it was just really great to hear how much the kids are loving it, as well as the teachers in the building, um, same thing in the junior high, they're just really enjoying it, and the kids are happy. And so I'm just thinking, I can already feel like a culture shift, just another positive thing, so we've gotten off to a great year, and I'm excited to be working with the high school now, and, um, just kind of transitioning into that and learning a lot, so.
Nikki, just, just to piggyback on what you said, I sit in the back for a reason when I come to the in-service. We have an expectation that kids dress appropriately, and all this that and other, which, I would go, Ms. Johnny, Melinda, we were supposed to meet on employee dress code, now, I saw some people that were employees that I would have said, inappropriate dress. So I guess what I'm saying is, if we have an expectation out of kids, we should have that same expectation out of the people that's represented, because otherwise, you just can't tell a kid to do something if you're not doing it yourself, so, uh, I'm not going to request a meeting right now unless I see it again, but I don't want to use the word, but I told Angela because she was sitting with me, uh, and I would have told you had you been sitting with her. I just think if we're going to say something, we need to do it ourselves, so if, if you guys, principals, can pay attention to that, but, and we don't want to call them out, we don't want to embarrass, we don't want to do any of that, maybe just pull them to the side and just have a general conversation, because I'm not saying this to get anybody in trouble, I'm just saying if we got this, we have to set the example, and, uh.
Well, and that Friday, or it's not, I kept on Friday, it's not Friday, it was Wednesday, a lot of times they'll wear their, their school shirts, and that way you can identify who they are with their jeans, and so it is a little bit less formal, but if there are specific things beyond that, I absolutely want to know.
Yeah, just be aware, yeah.
So we can, um, because I do agree, they set the tone, and we've talked about that with, um, dress, and we've also talked about that with cell phones, that it's important that we model the behavior we want to see from our students, so.
And if, if they can, in their report, principals specifically, tell us what you hear in regards to the policy being changed, because I'm, I'm curious to know if we did the right thing. And I'm hoping that we did, Nikki, uh, because I've read a lot of the Facebook posts, a lot of the comments, and I was kind of pleased with what I saw, uh, because I was on the front end of making that policy, and I was on the po, front end of changing that policy, and I'm hoping that.
Shocked us all.
Yeah, the issues, the issues that you guys, uh, have had in the past, that maybe they'll minimize, and you guys can focus more on, but seem like every time we minimize this over here, now you gotta do this, uh, attendant stuff, so, uh, maybe it was out, but I, I've been long enough, and I see what they've gone through, so I, I mean, they are really, uh, I couldn't do the job, wouldn't want to do the job. I think y'all need more money, I think the state be lying to you. Thirty years, uh, they always say education is important, but that's the first thing that everybody put on the chopping block, uh, I don't think you should have to put it up for a vote, I think if the money's there, pay you guys first, before you pay anybody else, that's my feeling, I, I stand on it, and, uh, Superintendent Education, the president, the senator, whoever, I'll tell them the same thing, I think you guys are very undervalued and underpaid, and I think somebody needs to stand up for you, and I've always been that one that's willing to say what I gotta say, and not afraid, uh, to do that, because y'all do a lot. You, you're the secretary, you're the counselor, you're the therapist, you're the psychologist, you're the law enforcement officer, you're the deep, I mean, you just can't go.
One day, yeah.
I'm done.
Sandra, you giving out your.
I don't have anything to add. We had a good start, so.
Good deal, good deal, thanks.
Go get your check.
We're five days in, uh, rolling buses out, uh, still short some drivers, but we're, we're getting them to and from school every day. Uh, we have had some major repairs we had to do, but Mr. Sanz has told me that I'm still doing a good job, so, uh, we're, we're keeping everything going.
How many bus drivers are you short? Story.
Melinda can do it, she retired.
You don't want me driving the bus.
I can see, I can get you trained.
Y'all try it, man.
I don't know if I can do it, but.
Uh, we've been busy working on getting all the laptops, you know, we, we looked at them all this summer, but when the teachers get them in their hands, it's like all the new bugs show up, so a lot of the equipment's been set up for the summer, so we've been working really diligently to get all that stuff going, and teachers in the new programs and, and all of this stuff, so.
Mike, what's your status on the coaching, internet stuff out there, I asked you last month, so.
We meet Monday at three o'clock with the engineer to hopefully hash it all out.
I enjoyed your class.
Thank you. We did have.
I learned some stuff, I learned something from everybody.
We had the privilege of going over AI to all the teachers and showing them the new stuff, so. Very good.
All right, Maria.
We start testing next week, this year we'll be working with eighth grade, and we'll also be working with ninth grade, so the kids are still needing, um, help with reading, so, we're excited.
Maria, I have to tell you, man, you just look so relaxed.
She's not. She's not.
Tired.
All right, so Kim?
Um, I'm trying to hit my back. Um, first of all, I have in your folders for you a copy of the People Progression Plan, I'm giving it to you ahead of time, Mr. Black.
You listen, I'm glad.
So I gave everybody, and all the cover, it tells you when our public meeting is, so that you have, uh, you know, proper time to look at the existing policy. Um, the template changes every year that we get from the state, so a lot of, um, the changes have already been updated, just because I put in a new template, but, um, we'll be having our meeting to go over that, any changes that they want, so, um, you're more than welcome to attend.
Kim, uh, any major changes? No.
So I guess one thing to note as you're looking through here, the only things we have the authority to change are what's in the boxes.
What's in the box, yes, everything else.
And the grading policy.
I mean, the stuff in the back. And the stuff in the back, okay.
That's really the only thing that we discuss, is like, well, we take grades on, what's, how many points it's worth, and things like that.
Now, is this elementary or the district?
It's the whole district, it's the whole district. So, I, I mean, all the district, the curriculum leaders have had a copy, and we pour over it before the meeting, so that, you know, if there's something major we need to discuss with the principals, like if there's something they notice, um, grade inflation is huge, we find that all the time. Um, we still have pockets that we find, um, and so we're constantly addressing areas where, um, grades could possibly be inflated, that would fix that. But other than that, that's really the only major thing to be addressed. And, uh, on a happy. And, uh, Tiny Town is trekking along, and, uh, Delinda has a smile on her face. Uh, y'all, it's tough with, uh, little people, and, uh.
It's a lot of secondary.
Yeah. Uh, Tim and Card teachers don't get paid nearly enough, in, in my, my opinion. Ms. Gilpatrick's world is trekking along, I, I mean, they're just teaching up the storm already, and, uh, Ms. Gregory, they're rocking and rolling, teaching. I was there today to introduce, um, their literacy screener, one thing we have new coming up is.
Hidden one.
Um, we have the K-three literacy screener, similar to the literacy, uh, it's the math screener equivalent of, uh, Dibbles, and, uh, it's a field test this year, so we just got the platform.
On another new platform.
A new platform, uh, we're waiting on the training to be uploaded, so that we can train ourselves on what to do, so that we can test kids in the same window that we test for reading, so, yeah.
That's what I've noticed, when we went to the professional team the other day, they don't just teach, they got software after software after, all these things they have to learn.
Yes, there is luck.
So Kim.
Yes.
Sometime tonight before you go to bed, just make sure you, uh, text Nikki and ask him what did he say about me. I'm gonna text her.
Okay. He hasn't texted yet, so.
Will do.
It's our secret now.
Okay. Angela, is there anything else you want to add, up here?
Um, personnel, I can ask.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Um, I think now, we're pretty much beside some day-by-days, Alana hired two in the last couple days, so. I think we're.
Hurry them up to bed.
As I'm saying, I think we're pretty well staffed, except for some day-by-day and stuff, um, I go to career fairs every spring. Um, I go to career fairs every spring, and it's getting less and less, and everybody knows that in education. We've got fewer and fewer that are teachers, it's everywhere, it's not just here, it's every university, um, and I'm hoping that's gonna change, but I don't think it will. So now we're trying to reinvent the wheel as far as trying to find teachers with associates or with, you know, a bachelor's and trying to get them certified. Um, it's, it's getting harder and harder every year since I've been here, and I know Dick Christmas can tell you that, now Melissa had made, she didn't hire nobody, pardon, except for some pair, so don't, don't sit over there, Melissa. She's the only one, a new teacher, she got nobody new teacher orientation, am I right?
That's the first time it's ever happened.
I don't know what Melissa's doing, you know, Melissa's living right, I guess, but anyway, but, so it's getting harder and harder, our teachers are having tougher and tougher jobs, so, um, I did exit in for interviews the other day, and last year we lost thirty teachers, which was quite a lot for us, because I was usually nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, this year it was twenty-six, I think, so it's going down some. So, you know, it's trending down some, so hopefully it'll keep going down, um, I wish I knew the city- To turnover and retention, and, uh, if we knew, you know, we could bottle that up, but, like I said, uh, teaching is a hard profession, so, you know, it is just hard, so. Swearing on personnel wise, so hopefully we can keep everybody and not lose anybody, but we might have one teacher that had a little setback to you, but hopefully we're gonna be good.
So Angela, let me, let me get you to turn as red as Katie's dress. Again, I always pay attention to things, what's the diversity ratio with, uh, our faculty?
Probably about, like, it's probably about like our students, we're about seventeen, eighteen percent, married and married, probably about the same.
Cause I, I've talked to Nick about this, uh, I don't think it's subtle, I don't think it's intentional, but I think we need to do better with regards to increasing that, uh, to a number that looks, cause when you look in this room, what do you see? Okay, and, and that, that's an issue with, uh, when you look at studies, statistics, and all those other things, and what you try to do is, is minimize any negative connotation that's attached to, uh, you know, in the system. So I, I, I know that you guys go to certain places.
And, uh, yeah, uh, I didn't get to go- When you, we go to U L M, what's, and grammar.
Y'all was going to Northwestern too, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, but I'm gonna tell you, there's not a lot that look like you coming to be a teacher.
Right, well, it could look like the reals.
There's not, there's various.
And we've lost several this year.
That we've had, we lost three at Grayson, you know.
Right, but, but, but again-
Delinda was in tears.
I was, yes.
Again, Angela, I think Bo would agree with this, because we've talked about it, uh, our course is why are they leaving? Okay, uh, but that's one of the reasons. But when you talk with them, there are other things that, that are said, so, again, I just want people to be conscious that before somebody leave, uh, I don't know if we're encouraging them to try to stay, or we're just saying, okay, just let them go, uh, but I think we need to do a better job, if we can.
Yeah, I agree, you know, and, and that's concerning, because we're losing some of our people that live here, so it's concerning, and, like I said, I know we support them, I know our principal's doing everything to support them, because I tell every teacher that I talk to that's new, that would come in, you're not gonna get more support than you want here, and I believe that.
Well, I, I agree with that.
I know they get supportive, so if you can't be a teacher here, I don't know if you can be a teacher anywhere.
Well, the issues that other people have, we don't have.
We don't have, we don't have.
Especially on a smaller scale.
Exactly.
So, uh, I think it's, it's a fortunate situation to be able to work here, but before they week is gone.
Yeah, we have other parents that are doing that.
So the competition there is, is gone, you know, we had that going for years, but-
Get some more money checking down, but, but they're doing a great job, like I said, it's, it's, uh, it's getting harder and harder every year, and it's not just us, it's everybody. You look at, if you go, I think like East Baton Rouge now, they, they, like last year, they were needing three hundred fifty teachers, the other day they did an article and it was like a hundred seventy. So at least we're not in a big parish with a hundred seventy teachers, so it's everybody that's losing teachers and looking for people, so it's not just us, it's hard.
Um, we got our bundles passed with the whip, so, um, we have something-
That's pretty major.
Um, so we have something to work towards with this new accountability model. Um, we had jumpstart- Summers this summer, I had, um, four nursing students, they're gonna test next week, and we had nine logistics students, and we had five of them pass, the other four is gonna retest as soon as I can get that set up. Um, they'll come to us and test next, and hopefully we'll finish out the rest of that class. Um, we started internships this year, we have the students that are willing to the cafe, they are getting internship credits, because they're working in cafe, and they're getting paid. And then we have, um, Ms. Meadows is teaching another internship class, and right now I think we have six, but she's working on two or three more, so we may have close to ten, um, internship kids in her class that are gonna not leave and work and be a paid part, and that goes into the new accountability model too.
Is that required, that's required now, man?
It's gonna be, it's not, it's gonna be, um, built in to the new accountability model tomorrow over eight years. So for the first eight years, it's gonna be bonus, but your percentages increase every year, how many kids you have to have to get that bonus. Yeah. Well, yeah, and some of them had jobs already, um, like we had a guy that works at Hat and Tire, we had a girl that works at Johnny's, so we took what they were already doing, and just put them in that internship class and kinda worked with that. But we've got a couple guys that wanna do it, but don't have jobs, so we're gonna place them.
We're looking for jobs.
We need jobs. So, yeah.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Sorry I was late, uh, was at a school, uh, until I walked in, um, they've gone for, uh, approving the job descriptions, um, I don't know if you mentioned that we got a shout out-
Oh, I didn't.
This week, um, and a, just another state level shout out for the work we're doing in the transition space, um, with Cafe. Uh, it was really funny, they even mentioned on the call our seventeen, I guess they're all still alive chicks.
You saw the chicken house?
So, it's, um, yeah, the start of the school year is, um, really the toughest for our students with disabilities. And I don't think that there's anybody sitting on these two rows that has not been heavily involved in the past five days with me trying to get all of our kids back in school with everything they need. Um, James has blared at me, because I've been really blowing him up about special transportation and that sort of thing, but I've been at, at an IP at all five schools that have, um, kids going, we've been working through things, and, um, I, you know, it, it really takes every single person to make that work for, um, for our kiddos who have something in learning differences. And I'm just so grateful that I work with a full room of people who are willing to work with me and with, for these kids.
That's what makes, uh, that's what makes it work, because you guys seem to work together and, you know, what you gotta have.
And, and because they're not, you know, they're not my kids, they're our kids.
We have joint testing.
That's what we say, yes.
Kaylee, you wanna give Monica's report?
I will, she sent it, uh, early childhood update from Monica, we had a wonderful family literacy event in kickoff, uh, on August the fourth, so over eighty families were there, participated in literacy activities that were provided by our friends at Waterford Early Learning, and each child received an age appropriate bag of books, activities as well, uh, as a set of family materials. All children, parents who are receiving T-shirts, there were many door prizes provided by Lake Shore, Waterford, and our Ready to Start Network. Registration is ongoing and steady, students will start on August the nineteenth, all early childhood teachers and parents along with several programs, along with several programs from Washataw, Vermont, and West Baton Rouge have been totally immersed this week in our Conscious Discipline Academy that is hosted at the pre-k. It's been a great, rewarding experience and waterfall. That's where she's at tonight, for dinner reflection.
Alright, Nick. Um, thank you to the board members who came to parts of our back to school professional development, um, I know you're getting out of jobs and all that, but it does, um, mean a lot to our teachers to see faces there, and I hope y'all learn, you know, a lot about what we're doing.
Uh, in the back of your folder, I did give you, um, the survey results as of today, right now with our, um, our sales tax initiative, at, as of today, we have a hundred and thirty-four responses, that's the first sheet. Uh, we've got, it lets you know, parents and guardians, teachers, coaches, community members, if they're non-parents, school staff, students, uh, what school they're connected to, they could choose more than one, so if you had multiple roles, you could. It just kinda lets you know who has answered the survey so far, and based on the survey results, I took it with the help of AI and said, make me a priority list, um, as of right now, as to what people want, and so that's the second thing I have for you, is the, the number one, and it tells you there were over fifty responses that people mentioned this, the number two, over forty. It's not a finalized list, but as of today, that's what the feedback is saying we want, um, goes all the way to like the top ten, so, I just wanted you to have that information, trying to be, like, literally trying to get ideas from people, because there are things on here that I had never even thought about, and I was like, oh, that's what's important, that's what people really want. And as we move forward, um, acknowledge we put it out on Facebook yesterday, and that's when we really start getting some feedback.
Getting some bullets, I guess.
We did have some bullets, um, so, um, I know that our work is cut out for us, but, um, we are committed to for the rest of this, um, the next three, little over three months, we said, really getting out and, and educating people on what we're trying to do, build trust with, um, the people who are supporting our, our students and, and see the value there. Um, trying to get on the agenda for Lions Club, I've talked to the Chamber, need to talk with the Industrial Development Board, the Police Jury, um, put some feelers out about going, I will go anywhere. So if you have any ideas about where I need to go and talk people about this, um, it's my mission this fall to advocate for our kids and make sure that they have everything they need to have a level playing field here, both in athletics and in extracurriculars. One of the questions I have right now is, why aren't we putting money into our core classes, but we write, these people write so many grants for literacy, math, science, social studies, CDF, special education, there's no grants for athletics and extracurriculars, so that's where we, we know we need a funding source, so. I just gave that information to you, so just take a look at that, if you have ideas, we'll share, and we'll try to get together, hopefully get some more responses to that survey, and get out and build a plan that by November, people feel good about, and, um, pass this back. That's all I have.
Hey Randy, before we close, uh, it's been many, many, many years that we had all of the directors here except, uh, Monica, so, uh, and when I got on the board, that's what I got used to with Ms., uh, Ms. Parker, uh, Ms. Emma Jean and all those, because if there were courses that I needed to ask, I could ask those people. So, uh, for whatever's worth, when you guys come, I like to see, uh, that way if I got a question, I can ask it, I don't wanna hear from the superintendent, I wanna hear the director from you guys, so, uh, thanks for coming, uh, I don't know what made Angela come here, but I wanna see you. Okay, and again, you guys, uh, the job that you're doing, uh, is hard. I wish there was something else that, uh, you know, we could do for you guys, but raising a kid now is, uh, it's, it's complicated, and, uh, for you guys to have them for that amount of time during the week, uh, my hat is off to each one of you guys. Uh, I don't know what else we can do, but at the end of the day, uh, it may seem like we got issues with you guys, but we really don't, because we know what it's like for you guys to be in the classroom. Uh, I myself, I, I know I'm gonna ask questions, as long as I'm here, that's why I got here, uh, but they were good intentions, uh, Nick can tell you, uh, if you need me, you can call me, if you have an issue, you can call me. Uh, I would like for every employee that worked for us to feel like that, uh, they don't have to be, uh, afraid to, to voice their concerns, voice their opinions, so with this particular, uh, document, anybody that's far against or whatever, she needs to know that, uh, her and I talk, uh, all the time. I think we developed a wonderful work relationship, so if her and I can do it, because we were here, okay, we were literally here, because I wanted to be there, but I realized that that was not the right thing to do, so I put it here. And I think you can attest that, uh, we talk all the time, uh, we do a lot that you guys don't know about, uh, but at the end of the day, what I'm trying to say is, if I can do it, anybody else can do it, so my expectation is that when there's, there are issues, we do what we need to do as adults, uh, because the most important thing is these kids. And if we don't do that, then I think we all fall short of what we're supposed to do, so I think we should put whatever differences aside, work with whoever, get to know whoever, uh, create a relationship, parents, teachers, or whatever, because at the end of the day, uh, if we fail one kid, we fail everybody. And I've always wanted, uh, every kid to at least get a decent education, uh, you know, from Caldwell, uh, and I think you guys are doing a, a wonderful job, uh, I disagree with Nick on some things, uh, she knows that, but she respects that, she don't have to hear it on the street, she hear it directly from me. Uh, I'll do the same for each one of you guys, uh, but at the end of the day, what I can tell you is, if you need me, I'm gonna always be there. So, uh, if we can get, whatever we're trying to get passed, passed, that's gonna be benefits for you guys, because at the end of the day, I'm on my way out the door. But I hope that the board that remains, uh, can continue to move forward and do what they need to do, but I'm proud to see you guys here, so, Kaylee, before we leave, we're gonna take a picture, because I believe in memories, uh, we can look back and realize that, you know-